I'll call the City Council Regular Meeting for October 16th to order, and ask those who'd like to join the council and myself in the Pledge of Allegiance to please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next item of business is audience comments, citizens' comments are an important part of the public process. We take them seriously and factor them into the decisions we make. Anyone from the public who wishes to comment on tonight's agenda items or other topics should do so at this time. Address your comments to the entire council and not to individuals. It is not a question-and-answer session. We'll contact you to follow up if needed. If you did not have an address on the sign-in sheet, you may leave that information on the clipboard at the front table after speaking. When recognized, use the lectern and speak into the microphone. State your name, address, and any relationship to the city. Limit your comments to five minutes. And if you have written comments, please submit those to the city clerk. A visual timer has been placed on the lectern. When it turns yellow, you are within the last minute of your comment period. If you use the full five minutes, the timer will sound to indicate the end of your allotted comment time. Please be respectful in your comments. And again, citizens' comments, written and verbal, are an important aspect of the public process. We take those comments seriously. And I want to thank members of the public for taking the time to address us during our meetings. And with that, I would ask, has anyone signed up to speak this evening?
Yes, Joe Werner.
Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to voice my opinion. I'm standing here to tell you that I am in opposition to safe injection sites within the city of Issaquah. I'm personally opposed to safe injection sites within the city of Issaquah. And the concept of utilizing city residences' tax dollars to support drug users to continue their drug habit is repulsive to me. Utilization of illegal drugs is against the law, federal, state, and local. How the city of Issaquah can even consider such support action, in my opinion, is reprehensible. Drug addicts chose to use illegal drugs. The citizens and taxpayers of Issaquah did not force or encourage drug-using individuals to become users and addicts. The city of Seattle, jokingly referred to as Free-attle, may have such an ordinance and a blind eye to drug addicts and safe injection sites, and as such, have encouraged more drug addicts to move to our area. The very idea that the city of Issaquah is thinking about safe injection sites is offensive from several perspectives, including: One, encouraging drug users to continue to use the use of drugs and at taxpayer expense. Two, the city is encouraging drug users and addicts to continue to break the law and using taxpayer dollars to do so. And three, encouraging more drug users to move to Issaquah and force the residents of the city to deal with the problems they bring with them. So in closing, city government, get back to basics of running our city without wasting our taxpayer dollars for a liberal, progressive agenda of the continuance of dumbing down America. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
No one further has signed up to speak.
David, would you like to speak this evening?
Please. David Kapler, 255 Southeast Andrews Street. Thank you. As a spokesperson for the liberal progressives in town. Joe and I agree, actually, though. I spend a week in New York City, usually for the last eight, nine years, visiting my daughter and exploring all over, all five boroughs. Nothing I found in New York City is as exciting or scary as part of Vancouver, B.C., that I happened to stumble into one day. And the ads on television, the Willie Horton ad makers would blush at some of the ugly ads we're seeing on TV about this topic. But at the same time, why spend time doing a moratorium and talking about bringing this up in six months? If you believe that this is even in the cards at all for Issaquah, you need to say where you would do it. There's like one place, and that's Community Hall, right here where you have Place and Fire. It's not going to happen here. Why are we spending all this time stirring up all the community? And actually, was probably doing a disservice to people who are trying to solve and help with this problem. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Or anybody, Steve?
Hi, good evening all. Steve Pereira, 170 Northeast Dogwood Street, for about 10 years. So several thoughts as I went through the regular business agenda. AB 7317, vertical mixed use. Again, I've asked you, there needs to be more public comment period before this even comes out to be enacted into law tonight. Doesn't seem to tonight. That should happen. Specifically, previously I talked about kind of the concept of a TDR, where this kind of becomes a receiving site for other development. I'd like to hear where development isn't going to go to counteract putting the development here in this specific location. Part two, I had heard public comment that previously talked about citizen input that's limited the height to 85 feet, and a proposition got brought forward to 125 feet. What happened with that gap, for understanding? Item three, I'd like to hear this in context of other possible vertical mixed use in the proposed Costco Development Agreement and the Raleigh Development Agreement. How do they counteract, or how do they interact with each other? What's going to be the larger impact before this gets brought forward? I'd like to hear more about the traffic plan, on how we're going to accommodate some 7,000 additional housing units. And the proposal I had heard at one point was for Gilman Boulevard to become one lane in each direction, and parking on the street, and a bike lane. So that would seem to be counteract that. To hear that, how that gets addressed. I'd like to hear about school interactions. On the safe injection sites, I don't have really input one or the other. I'd like to see community input come forward on this before the city takes a stand or position. However, since there's not currently anything on the books that would make Issaquah become a safe injection site, I don't want to see us spending more time talking about it. I agree, either do it or don't do it, and then move on to more issues that need focus today. Lastly, item F, which is the regional agenda. There were a number of items that I wasn't a big fan of. When it talks about, I'd like to see more talk about the canopy, tree canopy being preserved and retained. I'd like to see more public safety, where it talks about fire protection and restoration, since we are such a wooded hillside, and we hear a lot about fires going on. There talked about one for education, and I'd like to see some focus or difference drawn between when maybe the city of Issaquah and the school district have seeming to be competing needs or wants, how those get thrashed out, not just that we do whatever the Issaquah School District says, but we find a way to work together. And the Bellevue College doesn't really seem to be much of a regional agenda item. It seems to be more of a city of Issaquah wants to see Bellevue College build here. I'm not sure how it's a regional agenda item. I think there could be better focus. Thanks.
Thank you, Steve. Anyone else who desires to speak, who has not signed up? Anyone else? Seeing no one, audience comments are closed. Then we'll now move to committee and regional reports, beginning with Mariah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The King County Conservation District for Sound Cities Association will be meeting on Wednesday in Rinton at 3:30. On the agenda, they will be looking for a consensus vote on the recommendations that have been made for the 2017 Regional Food System Grants. I have basically sent this to everyone, a little bit late. So I would love to hear any feedback you have. I'll bring it up during the Good of the Order, and then the meeting is Wednesday. So you can contact me if you have questions or concerns. But the projects were ranked by the Regional Food Systems Grant Working Group on a numerical scale based on the strength of the application and the competitive grant funding priorities. And the priorities are infrastructure, consumer demand, land access, food safety, and business management. And they also took into consideration geographic distribution. So there's a lot of information, maps, but this was a very long process that the Conservation District has gone through to try to focus in on where the biggest needs were. So again, if you have questions or comments or anything that you'd like me to know before Wednesday, that would be great. That concludes my report. Thanks.
Thank you. Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My first announcement is to let you know, and some of you know already, but last week Governor Jay Ensley appointed me to the Washington State Public Works Board. And my terms started immediately as soon as I signed my affirmations sheet. And the first meeting, excuse me, will be November 3rd. It will meet once a month or every other month. And a little bit of what it does, some asked for that. It started in 1985, and it's basically a board put together to help bring technical support and financial support to jurisdictions, particularly smaller ones that may not have it in their infrastructure and public works projects. And so they can get financing much cheaper through this program versus going through regular bonding and so forth and all that's just paid back. And so it's a kind of a bank that cycles through, and as one pays back, it just goes back out again. So that's their task, and it's a four-year term. The Infrastructure Committee will not meet, it was scheduled for this Thursday, but it was canceled because there's nothing particular to talk about this month, so we canceled that. I was at the Emergency Management Advisory Committee on last Wednesday, and the topic was dams and dam safety. So it's interesting to realize there's over 90 licensed dams in King County, and only about a dozen of them have up-to-date plans on what happens if there's a failure of some sort. So the county is trying to work on getting those updated as a push to get increased dam safety. The Regional Transit Committee normally meets on the third Wednesday of the month, but this year it's been moved to the fourth Wednesday on the 25th of October. Don't have an agenda yet, but I will be there for that. And that concludes my report.
Bill, congratulations on your appointment, and thank you for your report.
Thank you.
Paul?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last Thursday, the 5th, we met, the Growth Management Policy Board met. And the key action of that meeting was the authorization. The board authorized the PSRC staff to take the regional draft, Regional Centers Framework Update, out for public comment. And did others get an email notification? I don't know if they just sent it to every elected or not. Did anybody see?
I did see that.
Okay. I will forward and make sure there's, the public comment period is through November 8th. I want to say that on balance, I think that this update really does make some improvements to growth planning in the region, and it really does no harm to Issaquah. Our Regional Growth Center is, would be grandfathered. It does set performance measures based upon specific measurable items. There is a decertification process that it proposes, and the intent is that, you know, maybe some places just weren't intended, and they shouldn't be eligible for regional funding. But that's only one small part of it. It spends a lot of time talking about manufacturing and industrial centers, but also military installations. And the board moved on Thursday to staff to make a recommendation that military centers such as Joint Base Lewis McCord to actually go through a certification process. Even though they don't plan under the GMA, they have such big job and transportation impacts in their local regions that if the nearby cities want to participate in the regional funding, nearby growth centers want to participate in the regional funding because of a military installation, military installations are going to have to apply and qualify under certain criteria. So that hasn't been defined, but I think the board accepted that there would be a qualification process. And so that is available out for public comment. It's available off on the PSRC website. And then last Thursday, on the 12th, I attended the second meeting of the PSRC 2018 Project Selection Task Force. Now, this task force, all it's doing is setting a policy, is establishing the policy for the project selection, what'll happen next year by the Transportation Policy Board. And really, it's a funny exercise, because you're not going in, there's a lot there, and they're quickly running through kind of policy questions, even though it wasn't on the agenda. And as a group, there's over 30 people involved, are agreeing to just do everything like we did last time in terms of the allocation of funds, what to do, what percentage to set as a set aside, policy-level things that'll guide the selection process for next year. One of the things, too, that we did address already is that King County, just like the other counties that planned under GMA, can forward for regional funds, a set number of projects for consideration. So we have a regional center within King County. And if we make an application for a transportation project related to our regional center, it will have to compete with others within King County applications. And then the county itself will only propose six of those for considered funding. And none of that has changed. It hasn't changed in the framework update, it hasn't changed in these funding policies as well. And similarly, the other counties have a certain number that they can forward for funding as well. We don't have any potential military installations here in King County. But if they were to become regional centers, then Pierce and Snohomish and even Kitsap Counties would. And they'd have to compete for their slots that those counties can propose. So the regional centers could mean more competition for funds, but only within the counties in which they exist. Not so much King County, therefore not so much with us. So that's my update on those. You got any questions? And I will forward to make sure you all have the email that shows where you can get the document for comment. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Paul. Tola?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. The Council Services and Safety Committee met on Tuesday, October 10th. We had an update on the Transit Oriented Development Opportunity Center, an update on the Classification and Compensation Study. We had four action items in front of us, Agenda Bill 7462 on school impact fees. We recommended it come back on November 6th. Agenda Bill 7443, Recreation Registration and Scheduling Software Development Agreement. We recommended it come back tonight, where it is on, I believe, regular business. Agenda Bill 7472, Providence Point Signalization. Here, we recommended it come back November 6th, but with some specific guidance around looking at two particular options, one being a transportation benefit district, and the other being a levy lid going down that path. And we asked the administration to come back to full council, hoping November 6th, with additional information how both of those options would impact residents and businesses in Issaquah. And then the final bill was 7482, 2017 Third Budget Amendment, which is the subject of a hearing this evening. Sound Cities Association Public Issue Committee met on Wednesday, October 11th. The thing that people here should know about is we took the first of two looks at a SCA legislative agenda. It has three planks, all three fairly high level. The first is looking at the property tax cap. It is generally felt that municipalities would like the option, at least the option to consider beyond a 1% increase in property tax. The second is investing in public health services, recognition that there's currently underfunding of public health services in the county. And then the third is addressing housing and homelessness crisis in the county, and what can be done about it. So, again, these are fairly high level. If you go take a look at the SCA materials, you'll find they're also fairly high level. They're about as detailed as I've just described to you. But if you have any feedback for me, please let me know offline. I intend to, this seems to dovetail with a lot of our concerns, but I would be happy to talk to folks further if anybody hears anything there that sounds like good. Thanks. That concludes my report.
Thanks, Tola. Mary Lou?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I attended the Eastside Fire and Rescue Board of Directors meeting on October 12th. Of note to our city, in the Fire Chief's briefing, he talked about some of our firefighting force heading from Washington down to work with the wildfire crews down in California. He also had a consumer warning, I guess, that he talked about. There was a press release. There are certain vendors out in the community right now representing themselves as our local fire department to do home inspections, and they're charging fees for this. They're not in a firefighting uniform, but they are in a uniform that looks like an Eastside Fire and Rescue uniform. And so they're trying to get the word out, and the vehicles they are driving in also look like firefighter vehicles. Trying to get the word out to the community. They have had complaints from some seniors who have been targeted that this is not our local fire department doing it. Currently, Eastside Fire and Rescue is having a discussion with Fall City about whether or not their fire department plans to do a merger with District 10. So this would be District 27 and 10, District 10 being one of our partners, talking about a merger. And it is just at the beginning stages right now. Maple Valley has also approached Eastside Fire and Rescue, as it has many other jurisdictions at this time, asking for Eastside Fire and Rescue to provide a price for contract for full fire and emergency services. Again, that one's at the beginning stages. Under new business, the 2018 budget and revenue expenses, the 2018 budget was approved without amendments. So that is something that our Finance Director has also been reviewing. Another item was a consideration of a new revenue stream, a motor vehicle accident revenue stream. And this is something that EFER had discussed five to seven years ago and had a split board. They're bringing it back now. There are very strong feelings from many board members as to whether or not this is a good idea or not, but it has been referred to the Finance and Administration Committee. There are approximately 40 fire departments that do it now. It is allowed under current RCWs. And what it does is it allows emergency services to bill insurance company for the cost of response during motor vehicle accidents. The next Finance and Administration Committee for Eastside Fire and Rescue will be on October 25th at Headquarters, and the next board meeting will be November 9th at 4:00 p.m. at Headquarters. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Stacy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Land and Shore Committee met on October 5th. Two of the items, Agenda Bill 7317, Vertical Mixed Use, and Agenda Bill 7483, 2017 Amendments to the Comprehensive Plan, are on our agenda tonight. Two of the items, End of Development Agreements and Agenda Bill 7326, Old Town Subarea Plan, are still in committee. And Agenda Bill 7342, Architectural Fit and Urban Design. I don't have my notes with me, but I believe the next stop might be full council. No, back to committee. Keith is nodding his head. Oh, on the 25th. Our next meeting is October 25th. I don't have the agenda in front of me, but it's right here at 6:30 p.m. So tune in. That's my report. Thanks.
Thanks, Stacy. There will be an executive session held this evening to discuss acquisition of real estate per RCW 42.30.110, per N1, per NB, pending potential litigation per RCW 42.30.110, per N1, per NI, and collective bargaining sessions per RCW 4230.140, per N4. These items are expected to take approximately 60 minutes. Action is anticipated to follow in open session. Councilmember Barber is in excused absence this evening. I am proclaiming October 16th to 22nd as Code Enforcement Officer Appreciation Week, and thank our code enforcement officials for ensuring our community's safety, health, and welfare. I'm also proclaiming the month of October as Domestic Violence Action Month, and urge all citizens to speak out against domestic violence. On October 3rd, the city hosted its Fourth Annual Brokers Forum. Along with answering a range of questions, we provided information on Issaquah's moratorium and current transportation projects. I attended the Eastside Transportation Partnership Meeting on October 13th, where we reviewed and approved our operating procedures and agreement. And there were no changes to either of those agreements. So that concludes my report. We'll now move to the consent calendar, and I'd ask the clerk to read the consent calendar into the record.
The consent calendar was distributed to council in advance for study. If authorized, council action will occur by single motion regarding the following items. Item A seeks approval of the accounts payables and payroll of October 16th. Items B and C seeks approval of the minutes of the special meeting of October 2nd and the regular meeting of October 2nd. Item D, AB 7360, KC.I90 Transportation Demand Management Partnership Agreement seeks to accept grant. Items E, F, and G, AB 7377 Water Meter Replacement, South Cove, AB 7378, 2017 Water Main Rehabilitation Project, and AB 7403 Mount Hood Tank Improvement Project seeks to accept projects. Item H, AB 7405, End of Certain Development Agreements Relating to Issaquah Highlands and Talis, seeks referral to Council Land and Shore Committee. Item I, AB 7414, King County Flood District Grant for East Lake Simamish Parkway, Southeast 56th Street, Conveyance Improvement, seeks to accept grant. Items J and K, AB 7459, Termination of Costco Easement, and AB 7493, Lake Simamish State Park Partnering Agreement, seeks referral to Council Land and Shore Committee. This concludes the reading.
Thank you. Tisha? Have the accounts payable and payroll been approved?
They have.
Thank you. Does any council member desire to remove any item from the consent calendar and consider it under regular business? Stacy?
I'd move to adopt the consent calendar as presented.
Second?
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That carries unanimously. Moving now to public hearing, Agenda Bill 7482, Third Budget Amendment. Jen Olson, our Finance Director for the staff report. Jen, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Butler. Tonight's public hearing is for the council to consider a budget amendment ordinance. This would be the third and final one for 2015, tonight to take public comment on the proposed amendments. What's a bit unusual about this particular budget amendment is that it includes some fund accounting adjustments that essentially are some housekeeping items in nature. They do not change the overall, prior to the budget adjustments, they do not change the overall revenues nor expenditures nor estimated ending fund balance. However, the budget amendments on the exhibit that the council has attached with the ordinance under the blue columns, blue highlighted columns, are those amendments that have come from council direction through an agenda bill or are essentially additional with regard... from council direction through an agenda bill, or are essentially additional with regards to the debt service, the debt fund, where we want to properly classify bond proceeds and those transfers out for the use of those bond proceeds from the prior voter-approved park bonds. So there's information in detail about this proposed ordinance. This item went to council services and safety, and staff reviewed that with the committee at that time, and it was referred back to the council for your final consideration. So that concludes my very brief presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions of the council.
Are there any questions? Mary Lou?
Thanks, Jen. Under the professional services for the finance department, there was an adjustment of $140,000 for the 2015-2016 audit. Was that the actual cost of the audit, or the increased cost of an audit?
That would include dollars for the increased cost of the audit. In 2017, we had audit costs for the 2015 audit as well as the 2016 audit, and so we essentially have a couple years, as well as some temporary accounting services that we have needed in order for us to comply with and be prepared for the auditors that are on site doing audit fieldwork.
So if we broke it into the two years, it's not an extraordinary cost, it's actually typical, it's just two years' worth of additional cost?
That's correct. What we're looking at is approximately an annual cost, anywhere between $90,000 and $120,000 for audit fieldwork from the state auditor's office.
And it looks like the cost for the work done up in Talis, the road and utility repair work is covered in a couple of places, but it looks like to date the work we did this summer was a $1.7 million expenditure when we include everything that we've done?
That budget amendment, it's actually separated out from the funds that are going to pay for it, and so this came from Agenda Bill 7434, and so this is what you're seeing is essentially the accounting of that. So what we have is the 957 from the general fund, and then we have the portions coming from the utility funds based on the associated costs for those utilities that are all going into the Street Capital Project Fund, where the project essentially is tracked out of or paid out of.
So if a resident was asking what the total expended this summer, 1.7 would be, 1.7 million would be the right number for this summer?
That would be based on the agenda bill.
Okay, and then I think the last one was, there was a note somewhere, Street Capital Project Fund, $2.1 million Newport Way proposed expenditures delayed.
That's correct.
So what was that? Was that something that went to infrastructure, where there was going to be an expenditure this year, but now it's not happening?
That's correct. What we're trying to do is, and especially with capital projects, it's all about cash flow. So if a project is delayed where the spending authorization is not needed, we want to correct that in the budget. What you'll see then in the 2018 budget, as well as in the capital budget, the 2018 through 2022 CIP that the council reviewed and authorized, is that that project, essentially those costs and associated funding shifted then with the changes to that project.
Thank you.
Paul?
Thank you. Jen, Ian, on Appendix, is it Appendix A, the, no, yes it is. It's Exhibit A to the ordinance, where you have the fund names and you have the columns of their changes. The very top one, the general fund, it, I think, in the far right column, for all of those funds, really, it's like, okay, with the aggregation of all the amendments that we've made, that's what we're estimating the ending fund balance to be for each of those funds.
At the time that a budget amendment or fund balance information is presented, it's a snapshot of the estimated ending fund balance.
Right, okay. What jumped out at me for the general fund, Jen, was it says 10 million, 93,000 and change? The budget document we just got forecast an estimated beginning balance for next year of 16 million, 900,000 and change, so that's a big discrepancy.
Well, fund balance is a hard one to provide information in a published document, and as I said, it is something that when we are doing forecasting and we are getting those numbers up to date, you'll always see, and that's why the budget reflects a better estimate of that. I would never want to provide you with too much, and so fund balance is one of those things that can be a challenge to estimate, but for the 2018 budget is where we focused our work on trying to provide a prediction of what we were going to have in that because we had some finality to the 2016 ending, the ending fund balance from the audit fieldwork.
Okay, so that's, it's nearly a $7 million difference. I mean, can you just give me a, is it just because of timing, or?
A lot of it is because of timing. The other thing that you'll want to remember is that the beginning balance for, you'll see over in the far left corner, is essentially, that is the ending, once we had the 2015 audit was finalized, and remember, we had two audits going on. So there was a lot of shifting around of information. It's not that we don't, we don't know what we have in our cash balances, but in the published document, it is difficult to provide a number and then to explain in detail the ins and outs of the checkbook. So the estimated ending fund balance that you see in a budget document is based on the budget. The 2018 beginning fund balance for '18 is where we're doing forecasted estimates for the end of 2017. So there is going to be a difference because we're looking at, the departments are looking at what they expect to spend and what we expect to receive in for revenues, so we're trying to get closer to the actual. So it's a lot of complication and a lot of detail that I'd be happy to provide in another method if it would, it pleases the council to understand fund balance in snapshot form.
Okay, if I may, let me try to re-characterize what I, in my own words, what I think I heard, is that for this agenda bill, everything that we're accounting for has gone through some very rigorous handling previously through other agenda bills, and you're very certain. There are both revenue and expenditure changes. Obviously, we've dealt with expenditure changes in previous bills, but you do put some revenue changes as well. And it's, I think you just said that those are pretty absolute, we know these changes happened. However, when you're doing the budget for next year, staff brought forward other forecasts of maybe revenue and already budgeted expenditures that may or may not happen, and you took that into account when you came up with the estimated beginning fund balance for next year's budget.
That's correct. One thing that is an internal administrative challenge is the moving or the fluidity of information that's coming when we're creating the budget, and when we're creating, when we're looking at retrospective information, budget versus actuals, and then, of course, we're going through the forecasting exercise for the end of the year from an audit perspective, and then, of course, creating that for the budget document, because we want to get as close as we can to a predicted ending fund balance for the budget document. The budget amendment is essentially a focus on the revenues and the expenditures, and not necessarily on the beginning and ending fund balance.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Seeing none then, I will open the public hearing at 7:40 and ask if anyone has signed up to speak.
No.
Are there anyone desiring to speak on the proposed budget changes for 2017? Anyone desiring to speak? Seeing none then, the public hearing is closed at 7:41. This is coming back from Services and Safety. Tola, do you want to speak to this?
I do, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. I would like to move to adopt ordinance number?
2808.
Mending the 2017 budget as set forth in ordinance number 2791, and amended in ordinances numbered 2795 and 2798 concerning revenues, expenditures, and fund balance for various funds for the year 2017, and authorizing the finance director to make the necessary adjustments and approving prior expenditures.
Second?
Moved and seconded. Additional questions or discussion? Seeing none then, all those in favor of adopting ordinance number 2808 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that carries unanimously. Moving now to regular business, Agenda Bill 7317, Vertical Mixed Use, Reference Development Moratorium, and our Economic Development Manager.
There you go. There you go. Thank you. Hi. Good evening. Good evening.
Jen Davis Hayes, who's all teed up and ready to go with a brief staff report.
Yes, good evening. My name is Jen Davis Hayes. I work here at the city in economic development, and tonight we're presenting to you the final recommendations for the vertical mixed use changes, which, as the mayor mentioned, is part of the development moratorium. You may remember, we were here at a work session to discuss these draft recommendations back in August, and since then have been through several meetings to refine these even further. One of the things I wanted to mention, this has been a project, has been since last spring. We at first hired a consultant by the, consultant firm by the name of Eco Northwest to look at the market study. And so in September of 2016, we presented the findings that they discovered, and so this is just a reminder of the study, and for those who are new to the topic. But basically, the market study showed that we were about five to 10 years out from vertical mixed use happening without additional incentives, and that the real estate market was moving in the correct direction. Any questions about this initial study we did? Okay. And then, after a lot of discussion with council, we were directed to look at the code to make sure that when the development does come, are we going to get the type of vertical mix, the type of buildings we want to see, which are vertical mixed use that will add to the vibrancy of our community? And so that scope, again, looked at our code and made the following recommendations here to move forward, to ensure that when development does come, it will be in the form of vertical mixed use, the commercial on the ground floor. So tonight, we're going to go into some of the detail. These are in your packets, you, these are the chapters that are being amended in our code for the central Isicua design and development standards. The first section, Chapter 1, just talks basically about the purpose and applicability, so that's a really general description of vertical mixed use and explaining that, where that applies. The next point I wanted to just briefly talk about is the geography, about where this will occur. So we are looking at, it's kind of a, maybe hard to see, it's a hatched parcel, there's three actually parcels, it looks like multiple, more than that, but it's the hatched parcels that are in our urban core, and the black lines are where actual commercial space will be required if there are buildings that are being built along those streets. Are there any questions about the location, geographic location we've identified? Yes?
Yeah, thanks, Jen. So the black line, that little, the table in there says it required ground floor frontages. That's what you just said as well. And could you just explain the difference between that and the other parcels which are, have the, that are, with this, would have the overlay? What's the difference between the entire overlay and those frontages?
Sure. So basically, again, so these are, there are three parcels here that are identified. So there's one on the corner of Northwest Gilman and 12th, a larger one that, where it says Future Northwest Mall is currently one parcel, and then the third parcel, which is the commons over here. And so if a developer, when a developer comes in to redevelop in this area, most likely there will be a phased redevelopment, because these are larger parcels, so you'll be looking at, are you looking at what the grander scheme is? If a building is built and it's along the, I could use this, along the, along here, again, so this area here will require commercial ground floor use, okay? If the building back in this, in this portion, let's just say is back here, they could have all residential, all commercial, all retail, and there are no, there are no ground floor requirements for that. Now, there are other requirements that we have in the code that they would have to abide by, but as far as having commercial space on the ground floor that is required, that would not be required. Does it not mean they cannot do that? Does that make sense? Did I answer your question?
It does, it does. I think the visual is always, is that, when you say vertical mixed use, it's a given building, and it has mixed uses.
Yep.
At the ground floor, something commercial and something perhaps not commercial, residential above that. The, but with, and so that's what's required on the black line, that's what the overlay is. But the rest of the parcels, it's, it still says vertical mixed use. That's still the overlay.
It's still the overlay, right. But there's other conditions they have to abide by as far as the building standards.
Right, just as, and so, you know, could you just share with us, you know, if it's not commercial on the first floor, what would be an example of vertical mixed use off somewhere within those parcels but not on the road frontages?
So that would not be required to have ground floor, so it could be, so it doesn't, it won't require it to be vertical mixed, it won't be required to be vertical mixed use. So it could be completely residential, completely retail, completely office?
Right, right. And that was my understanding, so I didn't see this in committee before, but I did see it in preparing for this evening. It does seem a little bit confusing to me that we have a vertical mixed use, but we're not requiring mixed use.
On all the, on the entire parcel? Yeah, so one of the things that both consultants looked at is the amount of commercial space you provide your community, and whether or not that's, it's, you know, a good balance. And so I think if you required on every single building within these parcels, it may, there may be a chance that there's overbuilding of retail space.
Right, and I understand. So I think what you're saying is it's zoning, more or less, for a given parcel. A parcel has one zone on it, and this overlay specifically adds the commercial component on those road frontages.
And some other development standards, yes.
Right.
Mariah?
And as we would move along, and perhaps we get the vertical mixed use in place in all of the areas that we have defined there, and things are starting to build out, is there a specific time that we've designated to take a look at it again and to revisit? I'm assuming that then we could require that potentially other areas have more vertical mixed use.
Sure. So this is part of the central Isicua development and design standards, so we do look at the central Isicua plan every three years for kind of a reexamination of that, and have, I believe, an annual report card. So there could be something that looks at that. But at any time, and I know that you may recall, serving under the Economic Vitality Commission, that we looked at several areas throughout the urban core, and actually, a lot of the discussion we had previously with council is looking at, you know, what space actually makes the most sense. So there, it definitely, we can, anytime, come back and look at what other, what other locations would make sense once this is built out.
Thank you.
Any other questions about the geography?
Continue.
Okay, so, and this is, so one of the things we wanted to make sure is, as users who come into our code, make sure that they have the opportunity to understand that we have an overlay, because we don't have that often in our code. So in the zoning, on the zoning map, and it's hard to see here, but the, those areas are hatched, and then it specifically calls out to look at the figure of the map, and then on that map, the figure 4-4, vertical mixed use overlay map, it has more information about where to get information about. it has more information about where to get information about the standards. So, in the actual, Chapter 4, we're looking at at the table permitted uses, again, trying to make it as easy as possible for people to utilize. And so, what we did was added two footnotes to the table, where they were added to specific items or specific uses. So, along the ground floor, along those black colored streets, we are going to require vertical mixed use, again, commercial ground floor for those areas. And on 60 feet from the corner of the building in, you are required to provide either retail or restaurant uses. So, those are, that's what's highlighted, or footnoted here. And then, basically, the middle of the building, you're able to provide the other uses that are currently allowed in the urban core. So, again, this, these properties are currently in the urban core, and we felt that there are some uses in there that are vibrant enough to add to the, to the commercial district as it gets built up. And we want to make sure that some of the spaces in the buildings are reserved for those more vibrant uses as restaurants and retail. Any thoughts about that, or questions? Yes?
Jen, the developments we've seen on the valley floor in the last couple of years have just been residential. And so, with this approach, where we are just requiring it on a certain strip, and Councilmember Batista's question about how often do we look at it? What else is there in here that if, over the next two or three-year period, again, we just see single-use buildings? Is it really three years that we have to wait to do something? Or it's something that we would maybe be tracking annually, so that if we're continuing down the line of just residential, we would have an opportunity to change? And then, nothing would restrict us from setting it this year, doing a evaluation next year, and changing? We could be that nimble?
It's, there's three parcels, so it'd be pretty easy to track. Yes. Yep. Yes, oh, sorry.
And just, you picked these three parcels, and I'm just wondering, you know, we don't know what, I don't know what property owners are thinking of. Maybe you do, and that's the question, is are these being considered to redevelop, or these might be sitting there for 20 years, because the people in them are very content with what they have? Or why were these, was there some of that information used in this election?
So, part of the analysis we did as staff, and then also the consultants did, is looking at what the amenities are in the area and what the future development opportunities are, and also looking at the parcels that are ripe for development. And so, the Commons Shopping Center has shown an interest in potentially redeveloping over time. They're not looking to do anything tomorrow, or, you know, in the near future. But there's discussion about potentially looking at, talking to them a little bit more about their development, their future development. Town and Country Center has a style of, you know, older shopping center with a lot of parking. And so, that's, again, in the area where we envision, where there's a lot of amenities ready. It's near the transit center. And we envision some redevelopment to be occurring in that area. So...
Thank you.
So, we are also adding a table that looks at the standard summary table. So, again, this is not a new zone. This is an overlay. So, people will be directed to this right below the other standard summary table. And so, the changes here are based on wanting to see more dense development in this area, so that we don't get single-story, single-use development. So, while we may not have ground floor commercial in every building that's built in here, we will have a more dense building type. So, we've increased the FAR from, for residential and commercial to 2.5. Currently, in the urban core, it's less than one for the minimum residential. And then, we've increased the base to 5.0 and the maximum to 8. We initially, just so you know, we initially had a recommendation to do the maximum height at 135 feet. It was the Planning Policy Commission's finding to recommend just remain at the 125, which is currently allowed under urban core zoning. And the administration concurred with that agreement. So, we've since amended that to 125. So, again, these standards will help to ensure that we actually get the type of building. They may not all be commercial on the ground floor, but the market will also determine. So, there may be, we may see a lot more vertical mixed use with commercial on the ground floor than what we require if the market's there. And that's what we feel is a good bet. Any questions about the numbers? Okay. And then, Chapter 8, Parking. So, you have recently discussed in the past additional parking requirements for requiring 50% of required parking and structured parking. We have increased that for these parcels to 90%. And so, again, that is trying to avoid having the sea of parking that 50% of your required parking would allow. Because in these, again, in these areas, you want to make sure that it's as pedestrian-friendly and as compact as possible. So... That is the quick review of our recommendations and changes to code. We are here to answer any questions.
All right, Mariah?
Jen, can you remind me, in the areas where vertical mixed use is not required, are, what would encourage someone to actually go forward and build vertical mixed use outside of that required area? Is there?
So, the market. So, if they believe that the location was a great use for vertical mixed use, we currently do not have any incentives to encourage that. But if, you know, if they feel like they're a good space, right. So, this does not preclude anybody anywhere else in the urban core or in the Central Issaquah Plan area that's allowed to develop a vertical mixed use building to do so. But there's just not a, any incentives to do that.
This is coming back from Land and Shore. Stacy, would you like to speak to this?
I can make a motion.
Well, that would be great.
I would move to adopt ordinance number 2809, adopting by reference amendments to the Central Issaquah Development and Design Standards, including establishing a vertical mixed use development overlay, establishing the regulations for vertical mixed use development, and requiring structured parking for new development within parcels within the vertical mixed use overlay.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Discussion or additional questions? Mary Lou?
Thanks. Jen, I wanted to say thank you for all your hard work on this. You were one of the first to come back before a committee with a moratorium work item, and we sent you back. You regrouped, brought in some more expertise, and this is entirely different than what you brought the first time. I think it's workable, and I'm really hopeful that we've landed in a great place. But thank you for your patience with us. And this is, this is really good.
It's a complex topic. Thanks for pushing us.
Other questions or discussion? All those in favor of adopting ordinance number 2809, as stated in the Agenda Bill, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that carries unanimously. Thank you, Jen.
Great, thank you.
Moving now to Agenda Bill 7443, Recreation Registration and Scheduling Software Professional Services Agreement. Jeff Waddling, our Director of Parks and Recreation for the staff report.
Mayor, thank you. Trish, I promised to be as quick as I can be. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. I'm here tonight to talk about a great opportunity we have to update and upgrade our recreation and registration software system and programs. I think, as we all know, recreation programs and services that we provide really are a primary touchpoint with many of our residents, that many of our residents have with us as a city. The registration software system itself is a very important element, and really, an initial element to their customer experience. We are currently operating with a system that was originally purchased in 1996, so 21 years old. Few upgrades, but certainly a system that is a little tired. And the vendor informed us last year that they'll no longer be supporting this system in future years. So, it really became an opportunity for us to explore other options and to seek, really, what we would find to be the best system we can find for our residents and for our own internal processes. With that in mind, we undertook over, a little over a year ago, an RFP process to seek that out. From the very beginning, we chose to take a very integrated approach with this in partnering directly with IT. Melissa Ching, our Admin Supervisor in Parks, has served as the Project Manager. Melissa's here. John Treger, IT Director, has been a, really, an important part of that team as well, just as subject matter expert, and also helping us navigate this RFP process. So, very much an interdepartmental process that I think we're very, very proud of. And I think the outcome that we have before you really speaks to the quality of that, of that work. We had six proposals that were submitted. Through some very thorough vetting, through three phases, we identified a very clear unanimous winner in a product called Perfect Mind. Not only was this unanimous amongst IT and recreation staff, but finance, and certainly their involvement in this process, certainly were clear consensus winners. We feel like this product gives us a real significant improvement in our internal integration, in particular with Munis, as well as a number of our other systems. We also feel like, very importantly, this is going to be a much better customer experience for those that are doing online registrations. We'll be able to, for the first time, actually streamline all of our rentals, so all the rental work we do at Pickering Barn and our picnic shelters and others, and incorporate that into this process. Not only is the online tool such a marked improvement, there's other sort of 21st century upgrades, such as being much more mobile device-friendly, and other tools that we think our customers are really going to find value in. As we identified in the Services and Safety meeting last week, a little bit of a timing thing to work through here, and that this is a 2018 expenditure. It was identified in the Six-Year CIP. It's also identified in the Proposed Capital Budget. Why we're here now, in late 2017, asking for this agreement is really, it's a contingent approval that we're asking for. With your contingent approval, that is, we wouldn't be expending any funds until 2018, and that would all be dependent upon 2018 budget being adopted. It does allow us to get on the vendor's schedule. It allows us to start to map out, as an internal staff, the work that we need to do and the scheduling we need to do to ultimately result in a quicker switchover in 2018. So, with that, I'm available. John and Melissa are certainly available if you have any additional questions. Thank you.
Are there any questions at this time? This is coming back from Services and Safety. Tola, would you like to speak to this or make a motion?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I move to authorize the mayor to enter into and execute an agreement with Perfect Mind Incorporated in 2018 to provide implementation, training, and ongoing support of the Perfect Mind cloud-based Parks and Recreation software for an estimated first-year amount of $96,012 and $45,012 annually over the remaining four years of the five-year period, for a total not to exceed $276,060.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Questions or discussion? Ula?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. We talked extensively about this. The city staff provided very good feedback on sort of the trade study that they performed, and the committee asked questions around some of the line items that we saw. And we couldn't, we couldn't find any fault with it. We picked at it and picked at it, and it all seemed pretty solid. The reason that we wanted it to come back to full council is that, as mentioned, this is one of the primary interfaces that people have with the city. This is one of the ways that people interact with their government. And so, we are excited about the possibility of moving into 21st century technology.
Other, Paul?
Yeah, thank you. Jeff, I don't know a lot about park software, but I know a little bit about these systems. Just some basic questions. I think in the 2018 budget, I didn't see any additional headcount. So, if you do implementations like this, always takes time, always takes cycles away from somebody. So, I, could you just say a word about how you're planning to staff this implementation? And that will have an impact on some people's availability and their work plans?
Absolutely. As I mentioned earlier, Melissa Ching will serve as the Project Manager. She's been the lead through this RFP process. I know John and the IT staff will be providing some support as well. And so, it's really, both departments have this in their work plan as we map this out. So, we're planning to do it with no additional, no additional staff.
Okay, and the, I have a couple of questions. The, so, the license fee, or whatever you call it, per year, whatever, however they refer to it, it's fixed. I assume then, there might, it's, there's no constraints in terms of like number of staff users or even external customer users? Sometimes, there's a lever there for the way these are priced. So, does this have any, are we, I see them shaking their heads.
No, no. It's a five-year, five-year set amount with that renewal. That will certainly be dependent upon what our revenue picture looks like in year six.
Okay, and then, so, this will be, there's some talk about data migration, and I'm a Parks customer. I'm also a City Utilities customer. And I think there's a permit somewhere in the database about some work we've done. And, and so, what is going to be the user, the customer, the citizen kind of experience here? It's, it's, this is more for John or anything, right? We really don't, is, are we, any, we doing any kind of master data implementation here? Or this is going, I mean, all of their customers are all going to be repeated in this, just like they're repeated in the utility side, just like they're repeated in, perhaps, in the development services side as well?
Yeah, I think John can speak to that, migration of the data we have in the old system to this, to this new one.
So, I think your question is more around centralized data repository of all these various systems, or this is just another one?
Like the, yeah, like the master data, like...
Well, that is, the master data database is not in scope initially for this. There's a lot of other moving pieces before we can build that. However, there will be data integration with the ERP system for back-and-forth transaction processing between the two. And this will be setting a new precedent for our e-commerce model, because we have other touches. We'll be having e-commerce that we don't currently have. So, currently in the city, the only e-commerce is the existing site, which is extremely outdated, if anybody here has used it. So, this will be the beginning of a much tighter integration with the finance system. As far as the citizen touches, you know, we'll have to have this available for the places where they may call and ask questions, in any front-office type or front-desk type of positions. The user interface is very easy to use, and it's easy to research what's going on with particular customers.
Okay, and then, just my last question. One of the biggest challenges to any type of implementation project like this is legacy data quality, if you have issues. And is this accounted for in the project plan as well? When you do conversions, you find out all your problems with data, and it can really have an impact on timeline.
Well, we did a high-level analysis of the data that's in there, and of course, there's all kinds of issues. So, there'll be some data cleanup, but that is in the project plan, at least the draft at this point.
Okay, thank you. That's all my questions. Thank you.
Ula?
Yeah, I just wanted to add around that question around implementation, because that was one of the things that we picked at in committee, because, you know, I've seen implementations of software packages. And so, I wanted to, we confirmed that 51,000 in first-year costs included the implementation effort, which sizes about how much, you know, if that's the external consultant effort, that sizes how big, you know, any potential internal support of that external, actual, you know, frontline work. And certainly, with the Parks Department, you know, that's of a size. If it was, if it was, you know, $500,000 of external consulting, or even a couple hundred thousand, then I would also be concerned about what the effort looked like on internal staff. But it's a small enough implementation that it seems reasonable.
Thank you. Mariah, followed by Bill.
So, when we were talking about this at Services, and I do have a question for you, John. This is a 21-year-old software that I think that the changeover, it sounds like is going to create a much better customer experience like is going to create a much better customer experience for everyone who's using that and then be a lot easier internally because mostly because of the integration with with other departments. And John, there was something about some servers that you were updating as well. Could you talk a little bit about that? I think you mentioned.
Well, this is a this is a hosted service. So, we won't be having to run servers like we currently do for the existing system that will take, you know, replace.
Did you have some that were you were phasing out? And so, this was a good move?
Exactly. So, our overall strategy for the city and part of our technology strategy is to move to cloud-based applications where it makes sense. There are always there'll always be exceptions, but the amount of servers that we'll be hosting has been dropping and this will continue to lower that number to reduce our footprint because the cost and complexity of managing that is getting a lot more difficult for and the amount of staff that requires to run a big server farm is not something that we're it's not in our strategy roadmap at this point. So, cloud-based is our goal for this particular application, as we are currently cloud-based for the Munis ERP system. And we're also our city's website is cloud-based. And so, there's a lot of platforms that touch the public that are cloud-based already. So, this was just catching up with the rest.
Thank you.
Bill?
Thank you. Question on the the customer experience. So, I saw here in one place it says it doesn't allow credit card offer credit card processing. But but it talked about it'll allow it some way as the old way that it's done. So, I'm just I'm asking what the customer experience is, they can come online and pay for their stuff with their credit card and that would be a seamless experience or not?
Of course, it would. I mean, they currently do that. And this is the current system has a lot of difficulty with refunds or other changes unless a perfect transaction is easy. Everything else is difficult with our current system. The new system greatly simplifies all that and makes that a lot easier for the customer experience. People schedule event and then they cancel, all that kind of stuff. And then, it's the integration piece into our e-commerce is going to be much more straightforward. Currently, it's not very easy for us to process.
Okay. And just a notice is Recreation Division pays $56,000 in merchant transaction fees. That's the credit card fees for people use it, the 3% or whatever.
Yeah. And that doesn't go away. We still have to use, you know, Visa wants their money, you know? So, that's really a no change. Essentially, we are in a different effort as part of the Munis program, looking at seeing if we can get a better rate by bringing in these other e-commerce pieces I was talking about. So, if we can, you know, negotiate a better rate with the clearinghouse, it's a credit card clearinghouse is what it's called, we might be able to do a little better on that. And when we start bringing in other services that people buy currently with checks or other types of payment, for example, utility billing.
Thank you.
Any additional questions or discussion? Seeing none then, all those in favor of authorizing the mayor to enter into and execute an agreement with Perfect Mind, Inc. in 2018 to provide implementation, training, and ongoing support of the Perfect Mind cloud-based parks and recreation software for an estimated first-year amount of $96,012 and $45,012 annually over the remaining four years of the five-year contract period for a total not to exceed $276,060. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No opposed? That carries unanimously. Moving now, Trish.
Now, now.
Do Agenda Bill 7483, 2017 amendments to the Comprehensive Plan. Trish Heinonen for the staff report.
Thank you. Okay. No. Thank you. I have the worst trouble with this screen. And then, just why isn't it started? Hmm? You can do a few more. Okay. Thank you. Technical difficulties. Okay, we're here for the annual comp plan amendments. There are very few this year because we did so many moratorium pieces. So, there's only a few. There's the land use element that we do every year with the Office of Financial Management, giving us our new population and household numbers. We added our new housing units to our state target. We changed our potential annexation areas map and the annexation history maps because of the King County Island and the Bellevue Utility Parcel. We did a few redesignations and rezones to newly owned city property. And we put in the transportation improvement program that you already adopted. That officially goes in the comp plan through this process. The first one quickly is how many housing new housing units were actually final this year that we can count for towards our state target. There was just over 1,000 new units in 2017. And so, there's just a little over 1,000 remaining in our 2031 state target.
I have a question.
Oh, okay.
Can you go back one, Trish, please? So, the can you clarify the 1,292 units remaining to the 2031 target? We've already got projects in the pipeline. And so, if you if and I realize technically, we don't include those.
Correct.
But if you were to account for those, what do we have remaining for our to our 2031 target?
We I think Keith did a rough estimate at Land and Shore and we had like.
He said 800 in the pipeline.
800 in the pipeline. So, that would be then pretty close to being the target, hitting the target.
So, 1,292 minus 800.
If they all come online next year, they'd all have to be final to count.
But not just next year, but if they actually.
Right. That are in.
Okay. So, it's 400 or 500 left.
Correct.
Okay. Thanks.
Correct. Other questions on this? We have a oh, I'm sorry.
So, could we go to the transportation improvement slide that?
The okay, that's at the end.
The oh, I'm sorry. I'm jumping ahead. I'm in the way.
Which is fine, but.
Go ahead.
You're going to miss all the excitement.
No, I don't want to miss the excitement.
I'm kidding. We have a new population number from the state. We're up to 36,030. Very exciting. And we also, because of the end of development agreements, we were able to really key into the what's left for entitlement for Talus and the Highlands. So, our population chart is a lot more accurate than it's been. We've always just had that end number because we just never were really sure how it would sort out. So, that's a lot more accurate in this go-around as well. This is our new potential annexation area map. It's I think it's pretty beautiful. There's only one left, which is very different than when I first started here. We're in you had asked about the little pieces up by Grand Ridge and I'm in a discussion with King County about those. We had always understood they call them on their map, the Issaquah Highlands gaps or something. They don't call it a PAA. They don't call it things that Issaquah should take in the near future. So, I have contacted them. We're going back and forth because when we negotiated Issaquah Highlands, those were always meant to stay King County. So, it seemed odd to us that perhaps they want us to take them over now. So, I wanted you to know we're still in discussions about that. This is the very busy annexation history map from the dinosaur age. And the one that's a little more clear to understand is how busy we've been since 1990. These are just the ones since 1990. And again, this is updated to have King County Island and the Bellevue Utility Parcel. We did, as I said, some redesignations and rezones. We sent letters to 300 property owners within 300 feet of all of them so they would know that some rezones are going on near them. The first group is the for the road project that's going to Costco. These are all going to be remain open space and part of them will be floodplain improvements. This one was purchased in part with fire impact fees. This one's on East Lake Semamish Parkway.
Trish, can I just ask you a question about that one?
Sure.
Partially purchased with impact fees or fully purchased with impact?
Um, I don't have the whole record of them, but I was her I was told that at least part of them was part of this was paid for with fire impact fees.
Yeah, it's fully paid with fire impact fees.
Fully, thanks. Fully paid, but thank you. Okay. I knew that it was a bunch. This is actually owned by the Overdale Property Owners Association and they wanted it to be a conservation easement. If you can recall, Janet Wall did this last year with her property up there. And so, they wanted to go through the same parcel. So, this is actually privately owned, but they wanted a conservation easement on it. So, we're proposing to rezone this as well to conservancy recreation as we did with Janet's last year. And this one is right down here on Front Street. And this is part of the Parks acquisition that they used park bond money for this one that will someday be a park of some sort along with the others. We own the some of the pieces to the north as well.
I have a question on that one too, Trish. So, that is the one that is currently grass where houses were demolished? So, that's the case?
Um, I haven't been by there recently. But I did check with Jen Fink on Friday to be sure that it had been purchased with park bond money. And she confirmed that it was park bond money.
So, just maybe I'll discuss it with the Chair of Land and Shore, but it would be interesting to know if this one is going to be zoned community facilities recreation as it's proposed here.
That's what it's proposed, correct.
What the interim uses might be and before this is built out as a park. But I'll just talk with the Chair of Land and Shore and see if that's something that we could get more information on in a later date.
Sure.
Or I could. It's going to be a park for a while.
Right. Or I can contact Jen and have her sure. Do you want me to follow up on that?
No, actually, I'll just.
You're going to.
Okay. Just put it up to the Chair and let her decide if she wants to do it.
Okay.
Thanks.
Now, Mariah, we're at the six-year TIP. And this is the same one that you all adopted. I believe it was early in the summer. And so, we haven't changed anything. We're just updating the document from last year with the document that you've approved and sent to the state already. So, that's what this is showing. And that's all. Did you have a question on that?
I did. So, when the breakout, I don't think it's it's not on your presentation, but the breakout of the transportation improvement projects in the spreadsheet. Now, I'm trying to find it.
It was actually taken from the summary page. That's what we got from Sheldon.
Okay. So, I'll just ask my question as I'm trying to find this.
Okay.
So, in the in the packet, it's like it's page 16 of 35, but it's where we're basically listing the 2018 to 2023 Transportation Improvement Plan. So, I could be confused, but when we were talking about the capital improvement plan, which include included transportation back in September on specifically on 0028, which was Northwest Semamish Road, that had to do with when Wash Dot comes in and is doing some shoulder work that we had that I had proposed adding money in for 2018, 2019 to coincide with that project. And I don't see it here. I'm assuming I should see it here.
Do you have anything about that?
It's just a question.
This is just what Sheldon gave me to put in the comp plan. So, I was assuming it was the adopted version, but I don't know a detail like that that might have changed. I can follow up.
Good evening, Keith Niven, Development Services Director and Economic Development Director. So, I think so, you're right. You did make a recommendation for a million dollars being going towards the pinch point. And I think procedurally, what would need to happen is if that gets adopted, I think it's in the budget, the budget as it's been presented by the mayor's office. And so, if that gets adopted by the council, then that would go into a docket item for next year to be added because it's it just hasn't happened yet. The recommendation that you've made is now, I think, part of the proposed 2018 budget. And then, if that gets adopted by the council, then we would put that into a 2018 comp plan docket item. So, it's not in the 17 work items because it's it's behind.
Okay. I thought it might be something procedural and so, I just wanted to ask about that. Thank you.
That's a good question.
Mary Lou?
Thank you. That was a do.
Maybe Emily or Jen Jen's not here tonight, but it may be an Emily question or a Bob question. And that is that I thought we adopted the CIP. I didn't think we were adopting the CIP during budget. I thought we adopted it. And so, I had assumed any changes that were in it would show up in the CFP or the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, I guess.
Oh. I think this is just a timing and sequence issue. And I don't think it's a significant one. I think everything Keith said is accurate. You made a motion at the tail end of our capital improvement program adoption to request some more immediate funding for that project. We have updated the capital improvement program to reflect that change. That's posted. It's available for all to see online. And we've taken steps to implement it via your proposed budget as well as a first-year capital program. And we'll talk more about that when we get into budget deliberations, what that looks like in the adopted budget. And we can talk about the actual work program for that item as well. I don't think it's significant enough that it needs to be reflected in this map, but we can incorporate it when we go through at its next time. These things always lag each other to some degree. We will make changes. We're going to have this from time to time. We're going to have it next year when we do an update to the capital improvement program. You're not going to immediately probably have the right sequence with adopting the comp plan amendments next year as well. So, you're going to be playing catch-up on one of the two documents.
Other questions or discussion? This is coming back from Land and Shore. Stacy?
I would move to adopt ordinance number 2810. Adopting by reference several amendments to the Comprehensive Plan for the City of Issaquah by updating the land use element, the transportation element and related maps and amending the land use designation map and zoning map for community facilities, properties, and the King County Island annexation area.
Second?
It's moved and seconded. Additional discussion or questions? Mary Lou?
A question for Trish. I think Emily's explanation makes sense, but from a transparency point of view, I find it kind of confusing. Why, under the comp plan then, wouldn't we actually footnote that table and refer to the actual governing document? Like, it seems odd to me to have a CIP that says one thing and a comp plan that says something else. Why why don't we cross-reference? Why don't we explain? It seems weird to have it stated differently in two documents.
And it's I think for the Comprehensive Plan being the policy document, we're required by the state to have the transportation improvement program as part of our document, even though it's previously been adopted months ago. So, it we sort of have to wait and tuck it in when we're ready to adopt ours. And so, the whole part of asking for funding and all that, because you do that at a whole different time than ours, we could certainly try to say to footnote whatever it is that's coming next year or that's on its way. But that gets a little odd, too, that all of a sudden it's March and there's a strange footnote about there's an extra million proposed that's in the so, the footnote would, I think, be confusing, too. It might be less confusing, but it's still it's still odd because the documents aren't just one.
Yeah, I think I meant to ask a different question.
Okay.
I understand that the CIP is approving projects and the budget is approving funding for projects. The CIP is a project list and the comp plan is a project list, and they don't match. And my suggestion is, why not footnote something somewhere either in the CIP or in the comp plan that says that there's a companion document, not saying call it a million dollars or talk about one project?
Oh, that there's.
But they are just project lists, both of them.
Right.
And they're different. And neither one is funding approval.
Right.
So, I'm not confused about the budget piece. It's having two programmatic documents that differ.
Okay.
So, I was going to suggest we could just amend the map because it is in the budget and it's in the capital plan. And if you want, if we want to capture mitigation fees for that project that really should be on the CFP list, so we could amend the map and just incorporate that as part of the.
Can we approve it tonight without the amended map? Just provide direction to amend the map?
Yes. Is that in here?
Yeah, I.
The direction is clear enough, so I think so.
Yeah, I think it is. And the and the document also references the CIP and the CIP is adopted. So, I think I think we're covered there. My point is just.
So I think, I think we're covered there. My point is just, our capital plan is always, it's a plan. It's a planning document. It will change over time, and so that's the catch-up that we have. But here, I think you have the clear linkage to the adopted CIP. And while the map may not have reflected one of those last-minute changes, I think you have all the backup that you need.
Okay. Thanks.
Paul?
Thank you. I want to make sure I understand all this as well. Bob, the project is actually already on TIP, the Sumamish Road project. So it's already eligible for mitigation funds. And so what we did late recently was amend, it was a change to the CIP. So when we may actually expend some of those funds, the project is already eligible for mitigation fees.
Mariah?
And I just wanted to clarify, it wasn't actually the map I was looking at. It was the, it was the spreadsheet that goes through everything and breaks it down by year. So I was just expecting to see that in 2018 and 2019 to coincide with that project. So, but we could maybe have that be updated in two sections.
So, just for the benefit of council, so the council did make that motion to put a million dollars into the budget. We adopted that. That's done. What we, and at that time, what we mentioned was, we still don't know when Washdott's gonna do their project, because it's gonna tie with that. You know, there's a possibility maybe three or four years before they actually do that, based on, you know, additional data that they're getting, and then if they're doing eastbound or westbound first. So I think, I just want to qualify that while we believe it's in the budget for next year, we got a million dollars in there, there's a possibility that it may not get done within the next couple of years.
I just wanted to say, and that's something that we talked about when we were talking about this amount of money, and the purpose of putting that forward was just that when the project does come forward, that helping out with that road and adding a sidewalk and dealing with some of the issues that those neighborhoods have all been dealing with would, would be there. So understanding that it could be a little bit further out, but that was the purpose of bringing the money forward and not having it all sit in future years.
Other questions or discussion? All those in favor of adopting ordinance number 2810 as stated by the Chair of the Land and Shore Committee signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That carries unanimously. Moving now to Agenda Bill 7471, opposing community health engagement locations, safe injection sites in Issaquah. This is coming back from the administration. Bob, for the staff report?
Thank you, Mayor. So as council recalls, the administration had proposed a resolution that would have banned safe injection sites. And this was in front of the council.
Hey, Bob, did you go to the podium?
Sure.
To make sure you're on TV. You don't get many opportunities for this.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Bob Harrison, City Administrator. And so this item had come to council. There's a lot of conversation, obviously, amongst a number of communities, and King County, for the safe injection sites. There was an original resolution that was proposed that would ban the sites. And based on public input, there was a desire to look at getting some additional feedback in the community and from the Human Services Commission. At that same time, when the resolution was passed, there was some consideration about doing a moratorium. And so there's really two kind of companion bills this evening. And we've, based on input that we got from the Services Committee Chair, where this would have been referred to eventually, and council leadership, we've decided that perhaps a better tack would be what we're proposing this evening. And so first of all, on September 5th, the council did refer this to the Safe, Human Services Commission and Services and Safety. There was a countywide initiative to ban safe injection sites scheduled for the February 28th, 18 special election. There was a decision made in Superior Court this, today, that overturned that ban, I'm sorry, that overturned that proposed legislation. I left the article unfortunately at my desk. So that will not be going in front of voters as of the decision today, although that certainly could be appealed.
So, so just to be clear, that was the citizens' initiative?
That was a citizens' initiative.
Citizens' initiative?
Yes.
And the King County Superior Court determined that that initiative had too broad of a reach to be a valid initiative. And that group has vowed to appeal, and appeal to the State Supreme Court if necessary. Just wanted to be clear about what that was. It wasn't the county council?
Yeah, thank you for clarifying. That's exactly right. The judge decided that local legislative bodies have the authority to determine budgets, and I-27, Initiative 27 impinged on that legislative authority of the county, and its entirety extends beyond the scope of the local initiative power. The judge also wrote that state law gives governing officials decision-making authority and public health measures, and Initiative 27 interferes with the Health Board and the county council's duties and obligations. So that decision was just made earlier today, which really gives strength to the argument that was proposed by council leadership and the Services and Safety Chair, that we look at a moratorium, which is a way to deal with the issue on a zoning perspective. So the first item is, what we're suggesting, is to discharge the Agenda Bill from consideration by the Human Services Commission and Council Services and Safety Committee, and indefinitely postpone consideration of Agenda Bill 7471. Proceed to consider and adopt a moratorium as outlined in Agenda Bill 7489, the moratorium on the community health engagement locations. And so that would be the item that would come up after this item. And we can talk a little bit about that when we get there.
Bob, can you talk a little bit about the effect of the first Agenda Bill, the effect when it says discharge from Human Services Commission? Talk about the effect that that would have on the ability of the Human Services Commission to continue to have that conversation, and then what it does to any referral to Services and Safety.
So that's a good question. And so the original motion would have been a direction by the City Council to the Human Services Commission to review that item, and then come back with a report to the City Council at that time. By discharging this, it discharges the official council action of taking it to that commission and expecting a report back. The Human Services Commission still has a full authority to review, investigate, and gather more information if they choose a community conversation around this issue, and then report back to the mayor at some future date, which is within the charge of their kind of commission responsibilities. What this action, though, does is it just takes away that council directive that the commission filed that report at some future date with the Services Committee, and then back to the City Council.
Thanks.
Other questions or discussion?
Paul? I appreciate that clarification, and I'm wondering if, if I say it this way, this is correct, too. Because the, the action that had taken, then it had asked the commission to make a recommendation on a very specific bill that included a resolution with very specific language in it. And, and all, what this bill, but with this action that we may be considering, I don't think we have a motion for it yet, right? So is, is simply saying, you don't need to consider that, that bill and that resolution. It's very specific to the previous legislation. It's not topic broad. It's just to a specific piece of legislation that they were asked to make a recommendation on.
That's correct.
Okay, so it's not, it's not stopping conversation about a topic. It's just stopping a given, a specific legislation. Okay, thank you.
There are no other questions. I'm gonna make a motion. I would move to discharge Agenda Bill 7471 from consideration by the Human Services Commission and Council Services and Safety Committee, and indefinitely postpone Agenda Bill 7471.
Second?
Oops.
Tola, I think you beat her just by a little bit.
She won?
Let's get in there.
Questions or additional discussion? Tola?
So, I normally try to keep my comments short, but I hope council will indulge me, because I'm gonna speak a little bit longer than I normally do, because this is, I consider, an extremely important topic that we're looking at today. I believe the original 7471 bill is unnecessary. The county council, in addressing CHL sites, basically said that a city would need to affirmatively, it would need to affirm that they wanted a CHL site to be considered for a CHL site. So doing nothing would mean that we would not have to consider a CHL site. So, so that's 7471. I don't believe there's a bill in front of us tonight, and my comments are gonna be on 7471 and 7489 together, because it's, it's hard to talk at a high level about them without talking about both of them. So, we don't have a bill in front of us in this process that would allow CHL sites. 7471 would have said no to CHL sites. And I believe 7489, the moratorium, is, if you look at it, a moratorium towards an eventual decision around, not around, I won't say outlawing, but prohibiting CHL sites. That's how I read Section 3 of 7489 of the actual ordinance. So when we were considering, first of all, I believe this is not about individual rights. This is about public safety. So there is nobody who is coming before this council who is saying, we want CHL sites because we want to be able to shoot heroin. People are coming before, there are people who have come before this council, respected people, leaders in our community, who have said that they believe that CHL sites would potentially save lives. I don't know if that's the case or not, but I believe that what we have in front of us is, at fundamental level, we have a situation where the vast majority of people in the city have made it clear that they're very against CHL sites. And then there is a minority who believe that CHL sites could save lives. And I think that in that situation, one has to be extraordinarily careful about adjudicating something like this. And so I personally am skeptical, and I have said this to the advocates of CHL sites, I am skeptical that CHL sites would, would be beneficial to a population. I believe that if you read the decriminalization data for, for instance, Portugal, I think what you find is that you see an increase in hard drug use, and you see a modest decrease in fatalities associated with those hard drugs. That is an extraordinarily difficult set of circumstances. And so I have said that I will need to see a lot of science before I would be, before I would consider allowing CHL sites. Nonetheless, I think we have to have the conversation. I think that we all know people who have been impacted by heroin use and have lost people. And I have a friend of mine who, you know, I remember when her niece was born. And recently, her niece came home. She was an 18-year-old girl. Her dad was waiting up for her. He kissed her goodnight. She went into her room and died. She had done what's called a speedball, which is where you mix heroin and cocaine. And she just died. And let me tell you, as the parent of a 19-year-old, that hits you close to home. So, again, I'm skeptical, but I think we owe it to understand the science, see if in fact it does, see if in fact there is a public safety benefit to considering CHL sites. Again, we don't have any bill in front of us that would authorize CHL sites. I just think we don't want to, I don't think we want to say absolutely positively no before we have taken a look at the science, because we owe it to the people in our community who have told us this is important to them to do so. So that's why I'll be supporting the motions this evening on both 7471 and 7489. Thank you.
Thank you, Tola. This talk, Bill?
Thank you. And, thank you, Tola. We agree on a lot there, and I appreciate the intro. I also, I'm not a supporter of CHL sites in Issaquah right now, I want to make that clear. But we don't know the answer to that question. That's, that's also clear. But to me, there shouldn't be an issue that we're discussing up here. As was stated, it wasn't an issue that needed to become, come before the council. It was a thing that if we took no action, no action would be taken, and it was fine. We don't have to pass ordinances against things that aren't gonna happen. So I guess that process that brought it up to the public, made it a public issue, does bother me in the way that came about, and created quite a stir in the community on both sides of the argument, that, that didn't need to happen. So I'm sorry that that did happen, and that some people are very stressed out by that, because it is a very complicated, emotional, and social engineering issue. It's not an easy thing to deal with. And I don't pretend to have the answers. But what I want to do is put it to bed, right? I wanted to let folks know that we're not dealing with this. No one that I know anywhere in Issaquah is proposing to, to have safe injection sites. There's no, no talk of doing that. And if we say we're postponing indefinitely, that this is not gonna be an option for us at this point in time, I think that wraps up how it was started. And if, if people in the community have discussions and bring things up, that's what community conversations are for. And they can bring those things up as they see fit, and, and those may come to things later, but who knows, right? That's not what we're looking at here. So I guess to me, it came as a, as an ordinance, and we rejected that basically, so without more information. Now we're saying we're gonna postpone it indefinitely. So I agree with that process. I do have a problem stepping again across the line to the next issue, of then declaring a moratorium against it that is specifically states direction to design something that is prohibiting the action. So to me, it's the same as the ordinance. It's just taking six months to do it. And so I think that's a very unnecessary item as well, because, again, we're taking steps of something that I can't support, because I don't know. And, and it's not a discussion. And again, I don't think we need to ban things that aren't on the table to talk about. So with that in mind, I'd like to just say that I'm looking at supporting indefinitely postponing it, but voting against the moratorium, because that is unnecessary, and just stokes the fire to bring things back in the community, in discussion, to worry about, and in six months to deal with. Again, I'd like to put it to bed tonight, that tonight, discussion from the council level stops, and ends, and the community knows that our discussion is ending on it. Community can do what they want, but our discussion is over with. Rather than keep it alive with a six-month moratorium, which keeps it alive until we have to deal with it again in six months, why would we do that to ourselves? I don't understand that. So I'll be voting against the moratorium part, hopefully just to put it, to postpone it indefinitely, and let it rest, as it should have been before it hadn't come up. Thank you.
Other questions or discussion? Seeing none, then, all those in favor of discharging Agenda Bill 7471 from consideration by the Human Services Commission and Council Services and Safety Committee, and number two, indefinitely postpone Agenda Bill 7471, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? That carries unanimously. Moving now to Agenda Bill 7489. Bob, would you explain this, and any, anything else you would like to add?
Sure. So, again, this was recommended by the Chair of the Services and Safety Committee, in agreement with the administration and council leadership, that this was an appropriate action to take, which is this moratorium. There's a public hearing scheduled as part of this moratorium in two weeks. It is a six-month moratorium, although we would anticipate that, that we would incorporate this item within just prohibited uses in the zoning code. And that would be our recommendation. It likely won't take six months to deal with. I think one of the concerns that we had was that that initial motion was done by the King County Council at one of their committees, and, and the King County Council, by simple motion, could lift the requirement that they had put on there that said the cities have to require them, have to have it a positive or affirmation by their city council to incorporate. So this very clearly deals with the issue that they're gonna be strictly prohibited within the cities. within the cities, whether the county changes their mind or keeps their mind as it is. So, we have a public hearing scheduled for November 6th, and this would essentially give us time for DSD to work through the issues affiliated with the zoning. There's findings of fact laid out in the ordinance, and then following the public hearing, the council may choose to amend those findings of fact based on the testimony provided at the public hearing at that time. But at this point, the findings of facts, if council adopts the ordinance, would be sufficient to proceed with the moratorium to clean up the zoning code.
Stacy?
So, I've got a question for Bill. You said you were going to vote against it because you wanted to go farther, and I didn't know if you were, if there was any interest in proposing a motion that would go further than the moratorium.
No.
I move to adopt ordinance number?
2811.
Providing for a moratorium and interim official control prohibiting the location of community health engagement locations, safe injection sites, in all zoning districts of the city, and set the required public hearing for the council meeting of November 6th, 2017.
Moved and seconded to discussion. Mary Lou?
Mr. Mayor, so I think what is not particularly transparent to the public when they look at our packet is that we've received an enormous amount of correspondence on this, and I think Councilmember Mert summed it up very nicely, very accurately. The community is definitely torn on this issue. There is a majority that is saying, "Do something and do something tonight," and there is a very concerned and vocal and supportive minority voice saying that this could be a tool in the toolbox that could help with the opioid crisis. I do agree with Councilmember Ramos that we're not talking about opening a CHEL site in Isequa and that there are a lot of unknowns. We also received a letter today from the ACLU, and I just wanted to talk to part of it. The last, second last paragraph from the end says that "Passing an unnecessary moratorium and limiting input from the Human Services Commission seems counterproductive. It also adds to the overwhelming amount of stigma individuals and their loved ones struggling with substance use disorder already face. In effect, it says that even though there is no way for a CHEL to open in Isequa, absent an affirmative voice, just to be safe, we want to go on the record opposing them anyway." And I have a lot of heartburn with that statement for a couple of reasons. One is, I think the first bill that was here tonight that we approved continues the community conversation at the community level with the Human Services Commission, and I think that is the appropriate place for it to be. We're not the final voice in this, it is the community, so the fact that we got through the first bill is great. But the second part that says that a moratorium actually is a negative vote, I don't agree with that. We don't know how something is going to function when we don't have code and regulations. We do put a moratorium in place, and I have never felt that any of the moratorium votes that we cast was negative to the issue. For example, medical marijuana, but in a moratorium until you figure out the rules. The council was actually in support of medical marijuana, they passed a moratorium to get ready. Retail marijuana, same thing. Issues with the Central Isequa Plan. I didn't hear anybody put up their hand and say, "I hate the plan, let's go back to the beginning." What they said was, "The rules aren't working, let's fix the rules." I actually believe the reason the council did the moratorium was because they wanted to put the effort back in to making the Central Isequa Plan rules and regulations work. If anything, it was a sensible pause to say, "We don't know what we're dealing with here, so let's take a break, let's take a moratorium." And so, for me personally, I find this entire issue extremely upsetting, whether you're reading the letters, listening to the testimony, somebody whose child has died, somebody whose family is affected, somebody who's concerned that East Hastings Street from Vancouver is coming to Isequa. It all makes sense. So, let's have the community conversation, and let's make sure that the council takes the break, if they need the break, to hear out the community conversation because we don't have any rules or regulations. I'm in favor of either a ban or a moratorium. Whatever the council decides tonight, I think we do owe the community a vote, and I understand why they're asking for it now. I think we need to follow through and do something. But for me, it's not a vote against, it's just saying, "We don't know enough, we're not ready. This is what we do when we're not ready and we don't know." And so, let's, let's see what happens with the county, let's see what happens with our community, but for tonight, I'm in support of either a moratorium or a ban. So, if Councilmember Ramos is more comfortable with a ban, I would support that as well. I'll wait to see what language you come up with, but I, you know what? We need to step up and say something tonight.
I thought you were pointing at Bob.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I should go like that. So, I agree with almost all the comments that I've heard, and, Tola, I agree with you about the science. Science is one thing, and if the science were to fall on the side of this being something that would be considered, I still would not, would not want or support even the idea of a CHEL site in Isequa unless the entire region, everybody in the region, all the cities, all the jurisdictions took their fair share. This is a, it's not just a regional issue here, it's a huge issue everywhere. But locally, this is a regional issue. This two-CHEL site pilot project, I don't understand. But this is an issue that every community is dealing with, and it just makes no sense, and I would never support CHEL sites unless this, everybody in the region was participating. So, I, and I agree with Mary Lou, I would support a ban, but if the rest of the council feels more comfortable with a moratorium, I would do that as well. It's, I think what our community is crying out for, the vast majority of the people, is certainty. And it's, it's not certain right now what this council might do because we've sent mixed signals.
So, this has been a really difficult issue to think about. We've received so much feedback from, from the public, which I really appreciate, just on, just on both sides. And I too agree with just about everything that everyone's talked about tonight. One thing, I think that the original bill and talking about a ban was unnecessary based on the language, but we're where we're at right now, and now we've been talking about this and getting all sorts of feedback from the public. So, it also does feel, it makes it tough to carry this out for a long period of time. I'm not in support of having a CHEL site in Isequa, and I would, in hearing Council President Goodman's statements regarding if this became something where the whole entire region had to adopt that, then we could, we could get more information at that time. But it's not something that I would be in support of, and I would either vote for a moratorium or a ban.
The language in this ordinance actually directs the Development Services to update our code, including the Central Isequa Development and Design Standards, to ensure that CHELs are prohibited. The purpose of this moratorium is to get things in place to assure they're prohibited. So, this is, this moratorium isn't about getting it right like we did with recreational marijuana or medical marijuana, like where, what zones within the city, what's, what's the distance between potential sites, what's the distance between a facility and, say, a park or a gathering place? Those other moratoriums were about making adjustments so we could, we had the, we had the legislative pieces in place to make sure something unfolded in a way that we wanted to do it. That's not what this does. This is, this is just a moratorium to make sure nothing slips in, and I, and so that we can officially and formally prohibit in, in the city of Isequa. Is that everybody's common understanding?
Mm-hmm.
I heard some comments tonight that suggested that there was, the more, the concept of a moratorium was different. It was that we were going to try to shape it correctly, but this is just about, this is just about establishing the prohibition. And that's what the first Agenda Bill that we originally considered a number of weeks back, and we just pulled back from the Human Services Commission, that's what 7471 did, it prohibited. And, and the reason that, but I just heard tonight also that that action we just took doesn't stop the Human Services Commission from having a conversation. But, but in effect, we, with this moratorium, the way this is written, we are completely taking it off the table. It says, it says, "Develop a way to prohibit CHELs." And, and you know, the fact of the matter is, actually, what the county said, we should be clear, that the council has to pass some type of resolution saying that we would, that they are interested in hosting one to get access to county funds. That's the purpose for their ask. So, and, I mean, that, I think that's a technicality, but I think it's very, very important. It's not just about whether or not you want one, it's actually very specifically to have access to their funds. You know, I think that the, the other thing, the other things that the task force that originally recommended, this was just one of many recommendations. There's many recommendations that deal with education programs, prevention programs, treatment programs. And, and when this first came to us, and I, and I'm the one who recommended we send it to the commission, was, you know, the, you know, if we cut this conversation off and don't, and make a policy decision without the conversation, then that, that would be a mistake. Because if we care about making a difference in people's lives, we'll have a conversation about education and prevention and, and a treatment, making a big difference, and the task force was very clear about this, and yet, yes, a CHEL or safe injection site may be another tool to help, help people and help save lives, but they also had quite a bit of emphasis that it was just one of things among a spectrum of things. And that's still my hope within the city of Isequa. I think this community does a very good job at having conversations about very sensitive issues, and I think it's a very good policy, and it's a very good idea, that when we have the time to have a conversation, because we're not faced with any action anytime soon, we're not, I'm not considering it, nobody's considering it, that, let's take that time, let's give that conversation the time it should have, give the community the time to have that conversation. And, and if through this process, more people realize, "Oh, my gosh, the Yoda program as part of the Isequa Schools Foundation is about teaching kids in way, about certain aspects of life that will help them resist in the future?" Wow, I didn't know about that. I know about that now, and I want to get involved, or I want to support that. That would be a very good step. If in this conversation about the availability of treatment and how difficult getting that treatment is, and what it means on families here on the east side, then, and people step up and say, "My gosh, treatment is, I understand it better, and it can work, I understand what, where the science already is, where it works," and people step up and say, "I'm going to, I'm going to somehow, I'm going to find a way to support that better." Then, that conversation will be worth it. And, and the idea, and I have spoken to quite a few people, and I want to say something else that, I think I want to repeat, I've heard, that, you know, it is really unfortunate, it is, it is tough. This has really engendered a lot of emotion, and I get it. I spoke to a gentleman a couple days ago who's 17 years into his recovery, and, and he felt very, very strongly about this topic. And, and, boy, the emotions are pretty real. We have definitely hit a nerve, and for good reason. I mean, this is a, this is deadly, this is dangerous, and, but the community, but society isn't really very good yet at helping ourselves or managing it. And it was very important to me that to make a difference in people's lives, both now and in the future, is that, that this, our community, Isequa, regardless of what happens here, because this, again, this is a, regarding a CHEL, that's just one thing that I don't, there, I've seen research that it does and that it doesn't work. I've seen some of that foreign research that really didn't talk at all about what the rest of the community was doing about education, prevention, and treatment, as our task force was very comprehensive in doing. And, and, but for me, I also agree that, you know what, this is, the community absolutely has to want this. And, and, and it, I think, if one ever happens anywhere, and say it happens in Seattle, it has to be really clear that this works, it makes a difference. And then, maybe the question of another facility somewhere else in the county would come up. I think that's very many years into the future. And so, I, and so, to summarize, I think this action for this moratorium, which is really getting to a place that we prohibit forevermore in our code, will, will end the conversation, and because, because we've ended it, we've ended any chance for this. And at, and at the same time, we will be missing the opportunity to really make a difference in people's lives. The conversations about training, about education, and about prevention will end. And that is what, and, and those are also going to save people's lives, and that's what the task force was trying to achieve. We would be ending the conversation with the way that this is currently structured, and, and that's very unfortunate. That is not what we want to do.
Stacy, you're next. You were raising.
Well, I was, I was just going to say that the Agenda Bill also would establish a public hearing, and so, after that public hearing, the, the direction would be amended, so it doesn't necessarily stop the conversation. And I had another, but I forgot about it because I was thinking about some other things.
Bill, Mary Lou, and Tola?
So, so to continue, I, I said this, to me, the conversation should have been started here in Isequa, and it doesn't need to. You mentioned, I'm going to make some comments on some things I've heard, that the county could change their direction and direct someone to have a CHEL site. I just, I can never imagine King County coming to Isequa and say, "You have to put a safe injection site in your town." I just can't imagine that ever happening as a direction. It's not going to happen. And I think, Paul mentioned, if anything, it would start somewhere else, and it'd be years into the future before it'd be, even be considered for us. So, I, you know, and if, if the county did change something, guess what? We can enact anything real quick with one council, meaning we could enact something and deal with it at that time, because then it's an issue. Then it's an issue if they say they want to do something in our town, absolutely. There's another thing I mentioned, that the council is sending mixed signals, and I don't think this council is sending any mixed signals at all. I'm going to, I'm going to step on this one a little bit because the council didn't bring this up. We did not desire to bring this up and bring it as an issue before the council. And we, and when it did come to us, it came to me totally unknown in an agenda, first time I saw it, and, and how the council reacted was, "We don't know. We don't know what this is, and we need to have a community conversation before that because we don't know." And that's what happened with the last one. So, I think the council's been pretty clear on, "We don't really know, and we should talk about it if we're going to do something." I think that part's been clear. Talked about a moratorium, and I've seen moratoriums that were mentioned are always used to fix something you're going to implement. You know, you stop something because you don't have the rules in place, you know you want to do something, but you got to get your act together first. This, again, is not that, for me, this is trying to take this from, you know, what was a ban to a moratorium, to put it in six months to try to make it a little more palatable. in six months to try to make it a little more palatable. It's, but to me, this is doing the exact thing as 74, 71 did with a six-month timeline, because it's saying we're prohibiting it, we're just going to do six months to do it. But the unfortunate part is it takes away the community conversation. Because with the previous one, we said, well, let's have a community conversation with Human Services and all, and, and so forth. And that is what should happen if, if the community wants to do that. And so when you put the moratorium in, and then you take away the direction to have a community conversation, now that's a mixed signal. And that I don't, I, I just can't go along with that whatsoever if you're gonna do something, say you're gonna do it and say, we're not, you know, directing anybody to educate us a little bit on this. It's a long ways from making something happen. So again, for, for all those reasons, I, I think we should not take an action here and let what action started and stop, end with what it is versus making legislation that actually bans, or a temporary ban, or a plan to ban without further discussion.
Mary Lou, and Tola.
A couple of questions for Bob first, and then a comment. So if I heard you during your presentation, Human Services Commission, which is separate from council, which is a citizens' commission, that's their own agenda. So whether or not we ask them to look at something, they can choose to look at something. And they have expressed a desire to discuss this issue with their community. That conversation will happen regardless of what we do tonight?
Yes, that's absolutely accurate.
Okay, so these two bills that we're talking about do not shut down community conversation with Human Services. The other thing that I'm hearing that I'm confused about is that I realize that we get to sit here for four years, and then we go back to the public and they decide if we get to resume in our position in our chair or not. So when we, if we were to, if this is a ban, or a moratorium, or however it works out, and the community and the larger region as a whole spends more time talking about this, could not the next sitting council actually change the code again to say, this is a viable option based on new research, you know, working with the county? So this is not a done deal. This is what this council thinks could be done at this period of time.
Yes, that's true. And I think the nice thing about the approach that you mentioned is that we would at least have an opportunity to think about where, in the, if, if the council at that time decided yes, Isaguas would be appropriate, we would at least have an opportunity to think about where it should go, what zoning area it should be included in. Right now, if a private vendor came in, decided to open one of these, we don't have any prohibition on where it could go. It could go pretty much anywhere, because it's not prohibited by the zoning code.
Thanks. So I guess after this discussion and Bob's answers, and I appreciate that everybody is all over the place on this, just like you here in the community, I, I am still strongly in support of a moratorium at least this evening. And I agreed with council president's statement earlier where, yes, the ordinance that we're looking at definitely walks down the path of, we should have a mor, we should put a moratorium in place, we should have a public hearing, and it looks like the intention right now is to go to a ban. I get that. We're the council, and this is gonna come in a public hearing, and you're gonna hear from lots of people again. And so we have been nimble enough in our decision-making, our deliberations, to change our mind. So I don't feel like this has tied our hands in any way if we vote on this tonight. I feel what it does do is give the community some certainty that we recognize this is complex situation with not a lot of information right now, a lot of emotion, and people on all sides of the issue. So I, I'm supportive of the ordinance in front of us. The outcome will be what the outcome will be in six months.
Tola.
So, long-term, I'm inclined to prohibit CHL sites, but I'm, I'm not ready to do it tonight. And one of the reasons why I'm not ready to do it tonight is that we have had some residents, not a majority, but we have had some residents and healthcare professionals tell us that CHL sites can save lives. And, which is why the six of us who are here tonight made the decision that we did before, to send it to Human Services and Services and Safety. Tonight doesn't decide chells if we move forward with this bill. I will point out Section 3 of the ordinance, which says the permanent regulations shall be developed and presented to the Planning Policy Commission for recommendation and to the City Council for action before expiration of the moratorium and interim control adopted by the ordinance. So more than just the November 6th public hearing, there would be a further touch point from this council going forward to do whatever this council decided to do. What this does is a pause, just like when we did a moratorium on medical marijuana, it wasn't clear that this council in its heart of hearts wanted to do medical marijuana. We had questions. When we did a pause on recreational marijuana, we had lots of questions. And we probably defaulted to a no until we had those questions answered. So we got those question answers. That's what a moratorium is, it's a pause. And so in addition to the information that's directed in this bill, we've discussed tonight that there's potential county and initiative action that could further clarify the legal standing or the environment for CHL sites. It may well be that the county would come back, you know, county could come back and say, you know what, we just want to do one in Seattle. I, we don't know, who knows? They'll do whatever they're gonna do. The point is, I believe to take this time and reevaluate this, again, the default, if we do nothing, is we don't get CHL sites, we're not on a path to get CHL sites, I'm just not ready to say no tonight. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote for my own motion, surprise, surprise. And if somehow it were to fail, and we were to consider a ban tonight, I would, a, a permanent ban, I would not be supporting that permanent ban, I'm just not ready. Thanks.
Okay, let's, Mariah, and then begin to summarize. We spent a lot of time on this, and it's an important topic, so, Mariah?
So the more I think about this, I would agree that the moratorium does give us time to pause. And I think that that's, that's probably, maybe become the key issue for me. When we're, when we're talking about not getting more information, that this gives us the opportunity to hear more information from the public. And I think that that's really important. That both sides of this issue are incredibly important, and we've heard a lot of people come forward and talk about how they don't want to see CHL sites, and a lot of people, and some people come forward that, that have just had some heartbreaking stories. And I want to make sure that we have a really good opportunity to look at all of this. So, so I would say that I, I think the moratorium is the best way to go. So we can take a pause, we get more information, and then, and then we can go forward from there.
Are you, Stacy?
Couple of things, yes. So the mixed signals, Bill, I can, I can respond to that. When I'm responding to dozens and dozens and dozens and dozens of emails from people concerned that the city council is considering CHL sites, those are mixed signals, whether they're intentional or not. People were very, 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 very concerned, dozens and dozens and dozens of people, and you know as well as I do, when we get that many emails, people are really, really concerned. And so I had to clarify to all of those people that we are not considering CHL sites. And we had to, the city clarified on its website, and then I clarified it in one of our regular meetings after that. That's the mixed signals. It wasn't that we did anything intentional or we're flip-flopping back and forth, that's what I mean by mixed signals. So the, this isn't something that I can support being in our toolbox right now. The vast majority of the comments that we've had from the community is no. And I don't think that the community wants these, the vast majority of the community wants these. I am up here to represent the community, and I could not support this being in our toolbox until the regional, the regions stood up and took responsibility, took responsibility, like I said before. So I, I, I am going to oppose the moratorium because I would support a ban. And if it fails, I'm gonna propose a ban.
Mary Lou?
Just from a process point of view, I'm thinking about what Councilmember Goodman just said, and yet that we only have six council members tonight that are sitting. Not sure if I'm following your logic here. I'm thinking the vote we had recently where we ended up having a tie vote, and then having another motion come on the table, and having it fail, and then not knowing where to go from then. And so I'm, I'm a little concerned that, I'm a little concerned that you would actually vote against a motion for a moratorium in favor of a ban. I'm just concerned about that. I just, I just wanted to say, I'm not sure we're gonna get to a good place tonight. I'm gonna share business.
Correct. If the moratorium is in effect, man.
Yes.
Paul?
Jim Haney.
Hello.
I was just gonna weigh in here and tell you that the moratorium is in effect a ban. You know, it's, in order to do any regulation on, without going through your planning commission in order to adopt a regulation, which is a land use control, which is in effect a ban of this as a land use, the only way you can really do that without going to your planning commission is by enacting it as an interim control or an interim regulation. And that's what this is. It then allows you to go through the planning commission afterwards and, in effect, decide whether you want to make this regulation permanent. Regulation as it currently stands does prohibit these facilities within the city of Isaguas in all zoning districts, so it's a zoning regulation. So it is in effect a ban, and then you're given six months to hold a public hearing and then decide whether you want to make that the permanent regulation, or whether you want to do something else. So I'm not sure that if you decide, if you decide you don't want to do a moratorium and you want to do a ban, I don't think there's really a difference procedurally as to what you're doing at the present time.
There, I think there is. I mean, a ban is a ban, a moratorium is a temporary ban, no?
Well, and what I'm saying is that you cannot enact a permanent regulation tonight, that what you need to do because of-
To have a hearing?
Yes, you need to, you need to, in order to enact permanent amendments to your zoning code, you need to go through your planning commission and follow the ordinary process. The way to not do that and to put a regulation in effect immediately is by doing the type of ordinance that you have in front of you. And then you hold a public hearing afterwards on this regulation in order to determine whether this regulation remains in effect while you go through the planning commission process.
So what was the one that we considered on September 5th, then?
That was just a policy statement.
What, what you had before you on September 5th, as, as I understand it, was a resolution, okay? And the resolution that was put before you was essentially because the King County Council, in its budget, its supplemental budget ordinance, and in its discussions in the supplemental budget ordinance, said that county funds would not be spent on a shell within a local jurisdiction unless the council affirmatively wanted it.
Right.
Now, some jurisdictions have taken the position that if we don't affirmatively want it and take affirmative action to request the county to have it here, then there won't be one because there won't be county funds spent under that budget ordinance. The resolution that was before you was more of an, an idea to make that a positive statement, I guess if we're saying positive, rather than saying, we're just gonna wait, and because we didn't say anything, the county won't put one here. It was a statement of, we oppose putting one here. But again, that was a policy statement, and it's a resolution, it's not a permanent amendment to your code. The only way to amend your code and have that kind of ban in effect is through this process.
Okay. Let's sort of wrap things up, Paul.
Well, thank you, Fred. And I said it before, I just, there seems to be different understandings of what this is intending to do. So this is, this is about everything that Jim just said, and so, and we would come out of this, the way this is written right now, and, and our code would prohibit anywhere within the city having a, a CHL. That's, that's what the intent that's here. And, and to get, and it says, go through the Planning Policy Commission to do that. And, and so this is, this is more formal than what we were considering last time, which was a policy statement. This is actually enacting it in code. And I still believe that if, with this being a very definitive, it's actually stronger than what any other, other jurisdictions have done, who have done, at least I think they've done policy statements, I could be wrong.
No, they haven't done, yeah.
I'm sorry?
No, we, sorry.
So they-
I got information from David Fujimoto that they've done bans, moratoriums, and-
So, and so I, you know, I, we've got a lot on our plate. It's unfortunate, I, I'm not sure what's magical about November 6th for a, for a public hearing. We are in budget season as well, and other, and other activities. And this, also note that this has just, it says go through planning policy, so I was gonna propose maybe also adding it, that it goes through Human Services Commission because it's land use, but it's actually human services as well. So that's more of an open comment than a direction.
Anyone else before we act? Bill?
I just want to clarify just before we go to vote. Once again, I will be voting no on this, but I'm not supporting CHL sites or safe injection sites in any way, shape, or form in Isaguas. It's the process and, and what we're doing and how it's come about to us that, that is not working for me, and I don't think we need to take any of this action to not have CHL sites here. And I want to end the conversation from us versus continuing the conversation, keeping that stirred up in the community, where we don't need to be doing that from the council perspective. Thank you.
Stacy, did you have?
I'll support it because it gets, I think I've made it pretty clear how I feel, and so I will be looking at the end of this process, that they're not allowed.
Mariah, briefly?
This is effectively a ban, but also giving the opportunity for public feedback, so I'll be supporting the moratorium. But I do want to say that I believe that this whole entire process has been incredibly confusing. It really does come down to a process issue for me, and I think that if we would have had an opportunity to talk about this before it came forward as a ban, we probably would be in a different place this evening.
Thank you.
Can I just say one quick thing, Bob?
Quickly, Mary Lou, everyone has had two or three times to speak, so please.
I do agree. I just want to actually say a little bit about the administration, because I think what I'm hearing about process is that this was originated with the administration, and I think the intention was very good. I think what you were trying to do was respond to a community concern in a very quick manner. Somehow it seems like the steps got out of order, but I think you were well-intentioned. So process or no process, I'm in support of the, the motion tonight.
All those in favor of adopting ordinance number 2811, providing for a moratorium and interim official control prohibiting the location of community health engagement locations, comma, safe injection sites in all zoning districts of the city, and set the required public hearing for the council meeting of November 6, 2017, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
The vote carries five, there's six of us tonight, five to one with Bill voting in the negative. Moving now to our last item under regular business, agenda bill. Bob, you moved up there at just the right time, didn't you? 7312, 2017 regional agenda, or the presentation.
Thank you. So council, remember this, it's orig-
It originally came to the council March 13th and they reviewed that draft at the work session. And so now it's been routed through all of the committees and those committee adjustments and recommendations have been modified and now it's coming back to council for its final review. At this point, our recommendation is, given the fact that it's mid-October and we'll be starting 2018 Regional Agenda, that, and actually if you probably saw in your packets that on the status updates, we actually got quite a few of these items already finished for this year, that the council simply receive the report this evening and that we work towards the 2018 Regional Agenda. And we start that process, you know, administratively, we'll start that process now and then we'll have it in front of the council, I think, in January for their first, so we can kind of get it done at the, at least within the first quarter of the year as we lay out kind of the work plan for the upcoming year. So I have it here in case anyone wants to go through any of the items on the Regional Agenda, but I was not planning on walking us through all the committee adjustments because if council simply receives a report, then I think it'll be done for this year and then we can move forward to the 2018 Regional Agenda.
Are there questions, Bob?
Yeah.
Stacy?
Yeah, I think there's a little bit more to the receive it. And can you speak a little, it's not just that it's late in the year. Can you speak a little bit more about, I mean, we had a conversation about what you thought would be beneficial in that we revisit Regional Agenda and what we're trying to accomplish with it so that the council could potentially be on the same page? Because different elements of the Regional Agenda went to different committees and those committees had very different conversations. And even at Land and Shore, and you and I talked about this, even at Land and Shore, when Paul and I were talking and debating back and forth about the Regional Agenda and there was some confusion about whether we should be recognizing accomplishments we want to achieve in the region or what we want to accomplish in Issaquah. And so I think there's confusion about what we're trying to accomplish with this. Paul and I, you know, worked on this initially together a couple of years ago and the Regional Agenda was Paul's idea. And so, but I think over time, there may be differences of opinion about what the Regional Agenda is supposed to accomplish. And maybe our initial opinions have changed, but I also think we have new council members and I don't think it's clear to everybody what we're trying to accomplish. So my understanding was that you also thought it was an opportunity for the council to review this again about what we're trying to accomplish with the Regional Agenda.
So I think that was a great summary of our conversation and that is true. So, you know, a couple of things. One is, what is it that we want to accomplish as a city? That's the ultimate goal. And then we do that for the legislative agenda. What do we want to get out of Olympia for our upcoming year? Same for the Regional Agenda. What is it that we want to do with our partners, other regional entities, the county, in trying to accomplish that? But at the end of the day, the focus is, you know, what's best for Issaquah? What's the outcome that we want for our community? The second piece of this is, as it's kind of worked its way through the process, there ended up being variances between the various committees. And so to try and, it was a challenge to try and get it back into the format that it originally represented. And so I think there's that opportunity in January for that conversation with the council to talk about, you know, what we want to accomplish with the Regional Agenda, what the outcomes are and the objective of it. And then even thinking about review, we may want to just kind of keep it at the work sessions. Maybe it's a couple of work sessions because just, I think going through that committee process, we ended up with a lot of variances that I don't think were intentional. It just kind of, just happens when you go through kind of a process like that.
Any additional, Paul?
Couple of things about the document itself and then some comments. Actually, even in the updated one, we should spell out WIRE 8. Okay. Just an acronym that's there. And then in the overview of the goals on that same page, which is in page two, it has just the goals for each of the areas. It doesn't reflect actually the goals that are on the tables down below. So it still has the original set of goals, but if you were to go to the overview on page two. So those still reflect... Oh, I see, yes. The original version and a number of those were updated. So that's just, that's just some housekeeping. So as far as the process, so we have a lot of big, complex, important things we're responsible for and I'm not surprised that when you try to tackle something as big as transportation or any one of those, public safety, go on down the list, that defining at a granular level objectives and goals to achieve a certain outcome, we'd never done that before. We've never done that. And so, and, you know, things run really fast when you've got seven people all on the same page, but that's not the way this former government works. There's always diverse sets of opinions and it takes longer, you know, to get that out, to talk it through and then come to an agreement with what is on a piece of paper. And so I'm not, I'm disappointed that we didn't get it done sooner and be able to consider it formally adopted, but I, but I'm, at the same time, I think a lot of really good work has been accomplished by every one of the committees and everybody who worked on it. It's better than it was before and there's probably not full agreement on every one of the issues, every one of the objectives and the actions as well. So by definition, this is going to be a living document and that's okay. But I think when it comes to action, probably the timing element of this, to maybe take it up again in the first quarter next year is, and I don't know, the whole calendar year cycle, I mean, a lot of these span many, many years. But we are also serving on regional boards and committees and other special task force and their work plans are yearly. So what we want to do is inform our own participation of that to align with those work plans and make sure that's very, very clear. And so I like the idea that we should challenge ourselves to complete this as soon as possible after the first of the year. And I think we have, I don't think it's going to take as long because we have an amazing body of work that wasn't here before. And so a lot of development and creative thought went into what we're looking at this evening. So it's good, it's better than it was. Receiving it means, I'm not sure what, but because we're not going to make any more appointments, that's coming in front of us. And those work plans for these regional boards and commissions will take effect early next year and that's when we need to get this implemented.
Mary Lou?
Thanks. So Bob, you did put, the council committees and the administration and MIA in particular put a lot of work into this. I agree with Council President Goodman's assessment that it seems like we are seven different legislators up here and this is a hard thing to get your head around and there ends up being a lot of wordsmithing, but this is very far, this moved in a direction very different than my expectations. And it would be interesting, actually, in our January meeting to settle on expectations. Just like the legislative agenda that you put together with our lobbyist and the mayor, to me, that's kind of our walking papers so that when we agree on that in January, whoever goes to Olympia, whoever goes to Sound Transit, whoever goes anywhere has a common unified city message. So while we're individually elected, we're going to be the most effective when we're unified in the region. I was, from a format point of view, hoping that this document would be that, those kinds of walking, marching orders for council as we're out in the region and not at Olympia and that at the end of the year, we'd be able to sit down and check the boxes. And so this is turning more into a kind of a document versus to me a tool in our toolbox. And especially for incoming, we've got two council members, you know, two years into their term, we might have two or three or more council members coming in that are brand new. And this was to really bring them up to speed regionally as we do at the state level. And so I'm not sure if we're going to end up with this format or a different format, but that's, getting our heads around expectations would be important and making sure we're all thinking we're going to get the same thing out of it. And then actually being able to come back in December before the year is over and go through and rate ourselves on how we did regionally in terms of the things we were trying to achieve for Isquah would really help us inform a January agenda-setting session. So that's just my expectations of what I hope we do next year.
Stacy?
I'm going to make a motion. Any other questions? I would move to receive the 2017 Regional Agenda as presented.
Seconded. It's moved and seconded. Any additional discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that carries unanimously. Moving now to good of the order. If anyone has any urgent items under good of the order. Mariah?
I just, a quick reminder about what I talked about earlier. So if you get a chance to take a look at that for the King County Conservation Board and all of the grant work that has been done and you have any feedback, let me know. Thank you.
Anything else? We will now move to executive session to discuss potential acquisition of real estate, pending potential litigation and collective bargaining sessions when we re-adjourn after a five-minute break. Please be back in your seats at 09:44. No. One minute?
That's a minute.
They gave us a minute.
Okay, we are adjourned temporarily.
We are back in regular session coming out of an executive session at 10:50. Are there any other business to... Stacy?
Thank you. I move to authorize the administration to sign the settlement agreement and stipulation as discussed in executive session, subject to minor non-substantive edits as approved by the city attorney.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That carries unanimously. Is there any other business to come before... Is there any other business to come before the council this evening? We are adjourned.